I want to welcome everyone to your city hall. It is August 2nd, 2022, and it's just at 4:00 PM. This is our work session for today. We see that we don't have a quorum yet for our TRC commissioners, but I welcome each of you that are here now. We will go to the next agenda item and then we'll get back later. So the next agenda item is Johnson County Direct Assistance Program. And so we will start that conversation at this point. We know through some of the memo that we've received and through communications that the county has finished that process. And then there were great opportunities for people in our community that did get awarded some funding, but there was certainly some that got left out. And so at this point, I wanted to just open up the floor to the councilors to maybe just discuss this. There was kind of a memo that we had, but I'll just open it up now.
Okay, fine, I'll start. The, I mean, I think the overall goal of the county project was to make sure that people who largely, but not solely, people who are not eligible for stimulus funds and who had really worked hard through the pandemic and suffered would get something. I don't think that the way the program was constructed was ideal. What sort of the money we agreed, we didn't end up with exactly the deal that we thought we were getting. However, I would really like to find a way to make the rest of the 319 people whole. If that means we pay a part of it, the county pays a part of it, whatever we end up with, basically these people have served everyone, they've worked for everyone, even if they don't live in Iowa City, we've all benefited from them. It's a one-time thing. I don't think Iowa City should bear the full burden, but nonetheless, one way or another, I would like to see us figure out together with the county and other governments how to make them whole.
I would second that, Janice. Just, I had said it to some community members, but I'll just repeat it here, that I would very much like to resolve this in a way that helps those who are excluded and that we help in the way that we began with a collaboration. And so I certainly hope that we can work something out. I believe that there is a way to do this. And I just, we don't want to exclude people anymore.
And I'll agree with my two previous council members, because to be honest, I was very disappointed to learn that there were individuals who did not receive any of the funds. I have appreciated the emails and the public comments about this, but what I don't appreciate, and I've said this many times before about other things, that being demanded to do something. And we did receive emails that demanded us to fund all 319 of the persons not funded. Demanding is not the way to go about wanting something. It has a very aggressive tone to it. Asking or requesting has a much better effect. And I do believe that those persons who should have qualified for funding should receive it, but I don't believe that Iowa City should be 100% responsible. We were provided a lot of information regarding the dispersment of the funds that included a lot of legal terms, and so it was kind of hard to get through all of it. But it also stated many times that this was for Iowa City residents. But after reading more closely, there is a clause in the sub-reception agreement dated 4/19/22 that mentions unused funds. On page 31 of the information packet under item three, it states that the city may otherwise direct the disposition of such remaining funds as the city and the sub-reception may mutually agree. So as mentioned, I would hope that we could agree with other entities on what to do with these remaining funds. There are two scenarios that I'll just mention that I'd be in favor of and hope the county would agree. First is Iowa City funding those individuals living in the near fringes of Iowa City. From what I've been told, there are a number of them that live in those mobile home courts that are just like across the road from the Iowa City city limits. And those folks are already being hit by being their trailer court being bought out by another entity and possibly having their lot rents raised. So they're already in dire need of extra funds, so I would be in favor of that. Other scenario would be Iowa City funding 50% of those individuals who were not funded, possibly meaning reimbursement to the county for those Iowa City residents that were funded, potentially giving additional resources back to the county for dispersment. But whatever we do, as the other councilors have mentioned, we just can't leave anyone behind struggling to get their feet back on the ground.
I would like to say that I would be very comfortable with either one of those options that Pauline was just mentioning and agree with pretty much everything that's been said thus far. Yeah, so I mean, I think either one of those, whether we look at, you know, something in a zone around the annexation zone that we already sort of see as maybe future parts of Iowa City, or just if we want to just keep it simple, just, you know, see if the county will just split it and we would reimburse them for half that number and they could use that to, you know, agree to use that for the other people that, you know, the other half that wouldn't, that would need to be done.
County residents.
Yeah, so.
I too share the, you know, I think the sentiment of council, which is that we're not there yet. We have 319 households which we need to address. And we won't be complete with this element of the program until we do that. I certainly hope we can work together and would expect in a sense that we, since we've, you know, aspired to work together with the other entities in terms of trying to solve this problem or problems in the past, that we will apply the same approach to this particular problem. You know, I might add, you know, I'm trying to think of as many scenarios that we might want to consider and explore as possible. In addition to the entities, the cities and the county, you know, I would ask the people of Johnson County as a whole, how can we all as citizens of this county, as residents of this county, contribute to addressing the gap that we have in the funding? I think there may be some possibilities there. It was in a sense used with the federal funding through CWJ where people were asked to contribute, if they received that funding, to contribute it back to CWJ. So perhaps there's an opportunity for all of us to, in any way we can, help bridge this gap, this funding gap. I personally would feel better if that were the case, that, you know, if we do believe this is in a sense of a kind of a moral imperative that we all understand that we may have a role to play with this. But I am hopeful that we will in the end be able to resolve this issue.
I agree with my colleagues that our intent was to get the money to those who are eligible for the program and hope that we can move forward to do that. I think for the sake of trying to come up with something concrete and be able to move forward quickly, I would just propose that we say 50% rather than having to delineate an area and, you know, select specific applicants within a geographic area. I think we know what the gap is now and just if the council agrees, offer to fund 50% with the understanding that because we made the commitment to Iowa City residents, that that would mean kind of backfilling a portion so that the county funds could then be freed up for those unpaid county residents and the Iowa City money could come in for Iowa City residents that would be equivalent to half of the remaining portion.
Great, well, thanks to all of the councilors that have spoken. And I would also agree that, you know, at this point, we certainly have an opportunity that I think we should navigate. We, I do believe that having some agreement with the county or having discussions with the county or giving the county a proposal to see what their temperament is for this or I think is a wise choice. At this point, I'm trying to figure out, you know, there's a few things that I heard, you know, trying to figure out how many, how we can fund individuals close to the adjacent to the city limits. I heard a 50-50 split. I think if we're going to move forward with something that we should maybe direct our staff a little more specifically to have the discussion with Johnson County, essentially they're gonna, the supervisors will have to have that discussion. But maybe there will be some opportunities where, you know, we can certainly create a letter on behalf of, I can, you know, create a letter with staff support on behalf of the councilors and just open up the opportunity for solutions to be created. And I, you know, the supervisors meet a little more often than we do, so I think we'll have some time for some correspondence between. But if there, it does sound like I have not heard anything more than a 50-50 split. And so my thought is that we would move forward, try to figure out what is the, what would the county agree to. I heard, you know, the backfill option where essentially we would pay, because the funds have already been allocated to all of the individuals that has been funded. But essentially, the city of Iowa City would pay for half of the 319 Iowa City residents. Well, half of 319 is what we would pay for, but it would be credited to Iowa City residents because as everyone knows, our ARPA funds cannot be used by anyone that is not within our jurisdiction. The other part that I probably just want to, so does it sound good that we'll kind of move forward with drafting a letter, I think? And then giving it to the county and then there'll be some communication between now and then?
Yeah, I'd suggest that we request that staff be in touch as well, as you indicated.
Yes, yes.
And that we also try to find a common ground of just let's get this done. As Laura mentioned, that, you know, with a sense of, if not urgency, although I guess urgency is the right thing, but let's just get it done. We don't need to do the back and the forth and the back and the forth that drew this out painfully for everybody who is involved. So, you know, we know that they're eligible already, they've met the criteria, let's just see what the county can do, is willing to do in terms of a collaboration. And again, the way the lottery happened was not necessarily ideal, but we did get a large number of people covered and now we just need to close that gap so that our intention and our actions are the same, so.
And if it turns out that there needs to be some kind of special joint meeting in order to accomplish this, I'm fine with that as well, whatever works.
Whatever it'll take, yeah.
To move this forward.
Okay. One thing I did want to just mention, you know, when I read through, because we all saw what councillor, Taylor, I was gonna say Thomas, but councillor Taylor had just talked about that resolution. And so when I read through the resolution, I do want to make it very clear in my statements to the council as well as to the public that we lived up to our agreement to a T, the city did. The agreement was to, you know, for everyone in the county, this was a county initiative, you know, go up and be a part of the lottery. And then anyone remaining that didn't make the lottery that lived in Iowa City would get funded. I also want to say that the county, from my perspective, did everything to the letter as well. So they knew exactly how much money they had and they knew, they followed the direction that was, you know, the information that was given to the public. So we have a lot to be proud of here. I think we, and that's the message that I don't hear ringing through the community, but we have a lot to be proud of. We're the only one in the entire state that has done this program. So we know that there's individuals that haven't been funded and this is an opportunity that we see, Iowa City, in my opinion. Again, we don't have any financial obligations to it, but we will, from the sound of everyone up here, we will go that extra mile to make sure that we can participate in a resolution. And so I just wanted to make that statement. And again, to everyone that's been funded, I think the county and the city were very happy that we were able to do this, thanks to the government. They gave us the ARPA funds to make this possible. And now we're trying to get to the last mile. So I would ask for grace and patience from the community members while we navigate this opportunity with the county, should they be receptive to it. Anything else on this item? All right. We're gonna move back to our first item on our agenda, which is a joint meeting with the Ad Hoc Truth and Reconciliation Commission. I want to welcome all of our commissioners here today. We do have a quorum, so super excited that you all are here with us today. The topic that we have on hand is certainly that of the budget. And so we want to go forth in the budget. I also want to mention that we know that there's a kind of a hot topic at hand with one of the commissioners, Amel Ali. What I'm gonna ask is that we focus in on the budget and then collectively, I think we're gonna not be able to speak on that topic. One, for timing, but also the council has different, the council and the commissioners have different levels of authority when it comes down to any commissioners. And so I think that topic is probably best left out of this conversation at this point. But we do want to go forth with our, with the budget discussion. All of the council did receive in our information packet, the budget proposal. And so I guess I'll look to our new vice chair to maybe start the discussion. But before we do that, I just wanted to maybe give the opportunity to all of our commissioners to just introduce yourself very briefly. I know it's been a while since we've been together. You probably know most of the councilors, at least I know most of you on a more personal basis, but maybe just give a brief little hello to each of us and give us your name. And I know some of you aren't in Iowa City, so tell us where you live.
Hi there, thank you for having us this evening. I'm excited for us to have this discussion. My name is Kevvo Rivera and I live in Iowa City.
Mohamed Tariori, formerly of South District until, I think it's February 2021, now in Tiffin, Iowa.
Great.
With Johnson here in Iowa City and thank you for having us.
Chastity Dillard, thank you all for having us and I live in Corville.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Daphne Daniel and I live on the east side of Iowa City.
Great. Welcome to all of you. And I think we'll just jump right into the budget discussion.
Awesome. Again, thank you all for having us here, inviting us here to have this budget proposal discussion. We went back and did the work that you guys all asked us to do over the last few months and we are excited to present this proposal to you. We are hoping to have this conversation to unite us all, to be on the same foot so that as we move forward, we can start to do the work or continue to do the work that we set forth off. So I'm just gonna briefly read what we have, that you all already have, and then we do have our partners here and they're the most knowledgeable, so I'm gonna let them answer all of your questions, if that's okay.
Great.
So the proposal that we have is actually a set of four proposals from four different groups, as you already know. Think Peace, Kearns &amp; West, three native partners, and the Healing Partners Team, which is our local team here. And we recognize that the skills and expertise of these, each of these group members are interdependent and necessary components to continue the work of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. What we have decided is the best, or what the proposal is going to present is that we would like a phased approach, giving knowledge that we are supposed to be ending next June. So it's a co, it's two phases, to co-create a framework and process that reflects intentionality. And it's important to recognize and include more local partners and have this phased approach from which to evaluate our progress. The two-phase approach is going to occur in three-to-four month interviews, interviews, intervals, and we will use that timeframe to evaluate next steps. So we do have some of our partners in the audiences, in the audience, but we would love whatever questions you all have to start off.
I know, I would be, would love to hear a little bit more how you broke down the phases and what we could expect under this plan.
Could you say it again?
Oh, I'm sorry. I would love to hear a little bit more about the phases in a little more detail and what we could expect under this plan.
Okay. So I would love to invite our partners that are in the audience to come explain this in more detail.
Hello.
Welcome.
Councilors and TRC, wonderful to be here. My name is Vee Fixmo Ariz and I'm the CEO and founder of STIG Planning. I actually am part of a team, the local healing team. So I have one of my partners here as well and somebody else who is on vacation because it's summertime. So I can kind of go through some of the phases as you asked for. And then we also have another partner here. So I have Annie Tucker, who's on our team, Angie Jordan, who's also on our, like, local team. And then we are fortunate to have Dave Ragland here, who is with Think Peace. And I believe Kearns &amp; West is listening in, so maybe I'll get a text message, I don't know. So as, you know, Chastity had kind of mentioned, this really is moving at the speed of trust. Really, we had kind of gone back to folks, the TRC and city councilors and the community to hear, you know, after that first and second time, like, what would be something that could actually move forward at a pace that was, you know, manageable? Because we kind of kept hearing that, that the chunks were too big, that, you know, it's too much, too soon, too fast. So kind of centering that, we really looked at a phased approach. And this first phase is really about education. So TRCs are international, there is a lot, I think, for really our community to learn and understand when it comes to truth and reconciliation commissions. What is it? How do they get started? What does it mean to actually go through the process to, you know, have, what does it, what does it mean when you're talking about having kind of like public hearings? Why is that important? There are a lot of really deep conversations and education that will be kind of that first phase as well as beginning some of that data collection. So we do kind of have another partner, Kearns &amp; West, who will be starting the data collection aspect of things, you know, working with the city school, you know, our school district, the police, hospitals, you know, all of the groups, nonprofits, you know, and community members. What is the data that we're looking for? That's really some of their expertise. And I should say that the education is, and the truth-telling team is Think Peace, so they, I'll let Ragland, Dave Ragland, talk about kind of their part and their, you know, experience doing that internationally. But then the local kind of Iowa Healing Reconciliation Team is us and then also three native Iowans who are actually very exciting, like kind of co-creating what it would mean to do restorative justice, healing circles that are specific to Iowa. Because we recognize that circles, while they happen all over the world, do have a tendency to potentially have appropriation and we want to make sure that we recognize that and really lean into that. So we, our team has really sought the inclusion of and sort of leading by native folks. How can we co-create something that is truly authentic to Iowa, to here and now, in this moment? So that will be kind of kicking off and forming that at the same time. So that's that first three phase. And we have this phase also to provide a pause. So after we kind of do that initial phase, we would like to come back and have some recommendations for moving forward to the second phase, knowing that we may need more time, there may be things that come up, things shift. If COVID has taught us anything, like everything is a draft. So, you know, there's gonna be some things that we may want to shift and deal with. So that's kind of that pause there, progress evaluation. And then shifting into that second phase, which is a little bit longer, as Chastity had mentioned, we really want to honor, you know, the kind of deadline of, you know, June with the commission. And that second phase is really looking and digging more into the truth-telling aspect, so conducting the interviews, the public, you know, the hearings and also the fact-finding. So digging even more to that, based on what we find out this first round. What more information do we need? Where do we need to go? What are we missing? Those kinds of things. And then continuing with the, continuing with the healing aspect of it as well. We talk about reconciliation. Obviously, when people are telling about the harm that has occurred to them, there is an opportunity for healing in the moment and then also in long term. We also have here strategic doing and planning that would be part of this. And myself and Angie Jordan are both trained in strategic doing and we feel as though that may be a process to really kind of kick off some of the strategic planning. How do we take all this and move this into, you know, into the community? We recognize that three local partners is not nearly representative of the amazing talent, experience, and knowledge of people who live here and their expertise. So while it may be three of us to begin with, we also encourage, you know, the creation of, you know, other groups and nonprofits that would be included along the way as those expertise are required. So the strategic doing would kind of help steer that a bit as well. That's like a really broad overview. You can kind of see in your packet more specific breakdown in terms of who's doing what, when. And again, that phased approach is really meant to take those bites and then pause and see like what worked. If anybody else wanted to come and talk about anything, if you have any questions at this point.
Real quick, I'm just intrigued by strategic doing. Could you explain that just a little bit?
Yeah, strategic doing. Actually, the Iowa City Area Development Group is a strategic doing hub here in Iowa City. And so myself and Angie Jordan were trained in basically a process that takes the assets and people in the room that are here and says, what can we do with the assets and the people in the room that we have in this moment to move forward towards a larger goal? Usually it's like an aspirational goal, like, you know, the best public schools in the country. And then how do we get there? And so then people start gravitating towards smaller, like low-hanging fruit, so to speak, through a strategic process of, well, what would be like, you know, something very difficult but also less expensive, or what would be more expensive and less difficult? So you kind of go through this kind of weighing and measuring of what do we have in the room? Where are we trying to go and how do we get there? And from that, you actually come up with Pathfinder projects. And that's where we would have like community members and groups and commission members, you know, kind of lead those Pathfinder projects. So yeah, it is very kind of specific, but in the end, it's like, it's like a fancy strategic planning in some sense.
And then it looks like the last part of the phrase, the recommendations for moving forward, would that be the phase of recommendations to the council about what's next? Kind of, that would be the end of the TRC ad hoc sort of mission at that point? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
So I think there's a couple points of recommendations. So after the first phase, we would have recommendations, and then the second phase would have recommendations. I don't want to weight it too much to be like, and here's the be-all, end-all, final recommendations, but I think that's what we'd be working towards is what are the next steps? Because we recognize that, you know, hundreds of years of harm and, you know, having the structural racism that we live within, seven months is not going to be enough, right? So what is, what is the long haul here?
I just wanted to add a note. So Tom Banta helped me go to the strategic doing training actually last May and wanted to add that I actually have a few path
I just wanted to add a note. So Tom Banta helped me go to the Strategic Doing Training, actually, last May, and wanted to add that I actually have a few Pathfinder projects that I wrote down at the time and then iterated on over the year. I can provide those as well for things to start, you know, planning on.
Awesome. Perfect. Yeah, we're very fortunate in our community that I feel like every time I say strategic doing, somebody's like, what is it? And then somebody's like, oh, I know how to do that. So that's, that's great to have that expertise in our community. Thank you.
Are you, do you have a start date when you're, or tentative start date on this?
Yeah, yesterday. As soon as possible, I think. We're, and I want to stress that this, the reason why I believe the TRC wanted to make this session was because it's a draft. And so we're really hoping to get your feedback to make it better, to make it. So if you have a suggestion of a start date, you know, those kinds of things, like, we're, that's what we're here to do.
So the second, the second phase, as it's currently envisioned, would be the, a lot of the, the truth-telling and that, because that wasn't, when I was reading through this, the plan, that wasn't completely clear to me.
Yes, that would be correct. Yep. Thanks.
That was what I was slightly confused about, too, was where in this document did it elaborate on community involvement, you know, such things as forums and listening posts and those kinds of things? I wasn't quite sure where that, where the community fit in to those kinds of things.
Yeah, we will add that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I actually have a question about the education piece. When you talk about education, it sounds like that is a piece that is both inward, I mean, the work that, so that everyone is working from the same understanding, but then also that it would be frontward-facing and community-based as well to provide education for, I was wondering about audience, but it sounds like in your description, it's both. Is that correct in Phase 1? That, that work will be happening as well?
Yeah, that is my understanding, and certainly Think Peace is the one who's going to lead that, and could talk, Dave Ragland could talk more about what that looks like. My understanding is that it's exceptionally important that the entire community is educated as possible, and that really there is, you know, a collective movement towards racial justice, that it can't just be the commission, that it has to be the community, is my understanding.
I guess questions I have for the commissioners, during your discussion, what were some of the highlights that you all brought up as maybe some concerns that you can think of right now?
Only thing for me is just, again, just time constraints, just the reconciliation process in itself. The true goal is reconciliation. Just have a hard time seeing how that's completed at a specific date or time. It's really hard to say when someone feels like they've, you know, had a situation remedy to their satisfaction. So the main thing for me is just some kind of avenue after the TRC is completed to have some kind of permanent commission or some kind of permanent board that's overseeing this actual reconciliation process. Otherwise, it ends up being a list of recommendations without any real backing. I'm not really sure how we can address that ourselves, since we can't, you know, say, hey, this commission's going to be permanent, but that's just one main concern.
Something that concerned me, and our community partners did take this concern seriously, was the matter of transparency. We don't want anything that we do to be seen as this is merely the commission taking upon itself to give a recommendation to city council about what we think the community needs and how we think the community can move forward. And I think our community partners have done a great job. And I'm, I mean, you, they were amazing during the process of discussing this, and I'm sure if there are specific questions, they can answer them, but one, one way they kind of dealt with that question of transparency is providing in the plan opportunities to, for us to, as, as both a commission and as the council, and maybe even as the community, to reflect on what has been done so far. So I believe after Phase 1, there's the moment where we kind of pause and reflect on this and then move forward. And I think that's so important when we're talking about something that not only brings up a lot of emotions, but could be controversial in some ways.
One question that I had brought up, and I'm not sure how much progress has been made on this, was the, you know, I think we have amazing partners so far, both that are locally based and experts in truth processes, and then also people who can take a lot of data and figure out how to really interpret that and make suggestions from there. And so I see, you know, three experts who can really successfully do three different things. One question that I had was, okay, how do all those parts talk to each other? And how do they communicate alongside us with the city? And they had kind of answered that in the suggestion of a TRC Commission Coordinator position. As it stands in the packet, the suggestion would be that that person could be a part-time employee of the city, but I just wanted to see if we had any more updates on kind of what that might look like.
Yeah, I don't think we had any further updates per se, but thank you so much for calling that out. Thank you. So it is imperative, you know, when you're doing something, that you have somebody who's doing the thing. And so as the work moves forward, having a local person that would, you know, reside with the city to do that, because it is a city commission, who could really focus on how do we coordinate all of the things? It can't, you know, currently, the commission, if they were to do things separately, you know, like, who is bringing sort of what we call herding cats? You know, like, how do you, how do you make sure that things are navigated? We have facilitation of meetings, we have meeting minute notes, we have, it's sort of the, I don't want to say the not sexy, boring stuff, but like, some of it is, you know? And then also making sure that we're coordinating the where, when, who, for, the truth-telling, for the events, for those kinds of things. It can't just be left to a commission when there's lots of, as we said, if we do the strategic doing, there will be Pathfinder projects, there will be specific tasks that they aren't, you know, going to be a part of and leading, hopefully. So the creation of this position, we feel would be really important and integral to moving forward as, you know, we have seven months to do this.
If I may, I think that how you've articulated it makes a lot of sense, that there does need to be sort of like a point of contact, and certainly someone who can kind of facilitate and organize and project manage essentially throughout. I will be honest, that my concern is that this is far more than a half-time job. And even in going into the specifics of the budget, there were several instances in which Kearns and West noted, assumption is Angie will lead this, right? That there's an awful lot of weight actually put on local partners, while I will also start to get into the weeds a little bit, that's not reflected in the budget.
Yep.
With all due respect to Kearns and West and their reputation, I think that their portion and what they're charging is heavily bloated, because also they're saying, oh, but we're not going to coordinate that, we're just, we're going to, so those are some concerns that I have. I very much like the way in which there has been this true, deep, and hard, hardly fought collaboration with a lot of local input and a lot of listening. I just, I wish that that was more reflected in what we have, because I fear that, in fact, the bulk of work will fall on local partners. I think it's going to fall to TRC. I think TRC needs, has an important role to play. And so I think that that's something moving forward, the awareness has to be there, because right now, the budget is not reflecting that at all. And I do fear for the, the fact of, the centrality of where this is happening, along with the passion and the expertise, that there will be a lion's share of work done by locals, which is fantastic, which is what the council, previous council wanted, but that that will not be reflected. And I think that in terms of thinking about equity, that that's something that really matters.
Yeah, thank you so much for bringing that up. In fact, you'll see that there are no, there's no rate for Angie in our proposal. There are hours allocated, because we didn't feel like we could say what the city should pay that person. So we, that is a good point to bring up, that when you're looking at our local partners, we are mostly focusing on the reconciliation aspect of it and the coordinator position. We wanted to make sure that Angie was still a part of the process, because she has been so integral since day one. So that's why it's not reflected there, and we didn't know, we don't know the process for hiring, or we don't know, you know, like, all of that kind of logistic stuff. So that's, that's why that is missing, but I appreciate that you're really bringing that up. And I will say, you know, in all honesty, having not done a Truth and Reconciliation Commission process before, we are really trying to stay in our lane. You know, as local partners, we're saying, here's what we can do. We can, we can hold these healing circles, we have restorative justice, you know, practices, and can certainly convene and help. And then we are going to have to rely on a coordinator to kind of do the, the herding of cats and the organizing and the scheduling and all of that stuff. But, so yeah, to your point, that is not reflected in the budget, and so that would be something separate, and I'm, we don't know what that is.
Thank you, Vee, for that explanation of the coordinator position, because I, I was a little confused about that, and I did have concerns for it, because it seemed as though, it sounded more like a facilitator, actual facilitator role, and in fact, in the description of the position, facilitator is mentioned many times. And so I was wondering why we actually, or why you needed a person in addition to that. But aside from that, I wanted to thank the commission and the partners for this document, because this most recent proposal, I think, is what I wish we would have seen over a year ago, rather than being given bold proposals over time that weren't really very reasonable. This one is much more specific and defines roles, which, which is very good. So my, my concern was about that coordinator position, as well as the community involvement. But this document certainly, I think, comes closer to what we as a council, I don't want to speak for my other council members, but what we were interested in, in seeing to, to help get the TRC back on track to their original mission. But considering the remaining timeframe, it does seem a bit overwhelming, so that would be my concern, too, with the timeframe.
I certainly want to make sure that council recognize we have the opportunity to speak to our TRC commissioners. And TRC, you also have the opportunity to speak to us, so please chime in. And the support of, you know, the individuals here, we appreciate you being here, but I also want to make sure that it's, make sure that we have space to interact as well.
I would, as part of this, I'd also be interested in hearing from Dave Ragland, who has a lot of experience in these, with these processes, to get his, to get your sense of how these pieces fit together and, and how we would move this forward.
Before that, I just wanted to ask for a clarification. So I'm hearing that I wish we would have had this proposal like a year ago. What are the specific parts that made it become more amenable? Because the Kearns and West part of it is pretty much the same format.
It seemed to be more itemized, as far as who all was going to be involved, rather than just this massive facilitator, Kearns and West was going to kind of be responsible for the whole ball of wax. But this itemizes and does some more as far as what Annie and her team would do, and what you as, as commissioners would be doing and responsible for, and a timeframe. Before, I don't think we had much of a timeframe, it was just sort of, this is what we're going to do. So I appreciated that, that it was spelled out, that within this three months and then within four months. So that's what I found as much better, much more helpful.
There's a lot of specificity that's, that's very helpful, at least from my perspective.
Welcome.
Hi, it's a pleasure to be here, and I just want to honor this commission, this council, for doing this really hard and important work. I think the things I want to speak to is like who we are at Think Peace, and just sharing that some of our formative experiences has been working in truth commissions around the world, Chile, Argentina, Peru, also local commissions. We're currently working with San Francisco Truth Commissioner, Truth Commissioner on prosecutorial misconduct. I worked and helped to found the Ferguson Truth Commission with Congresswoman Cori Bush. And some of the other work that we're doing is working with Portland City Council and the mayor's office there. And so we're essentially, we really wanted, I think in the last few years, we've been seeing how necessary it is to defend democracy and to also heal as a nation. And the reason why we wanted to work with local commissions and have started working with local commissions around the country is because we wanted to provide some of the support that commissions need to move forward to the next phase, to do whatever they wanted to do. And some of the work that we've done already is we offered a course on, the formal term of truth and reconciliation is transitional justice, and we offered a course where many of the commissioners attended, around what does a process look like from start to finish. And we've been working with other commissions, providing a hub space, so that communities around the country can be in touch with each other as they do this work as well. And one of the primary things that's come out of this work is providing technical assistance. And when we, the technical assistance, as you see in Phase 1, is focused on education. And part of the education is to build capacity in communities to do this work themselves, right? Because we understand that we're, we're not going to be here all the time, although we're committed to seeing what happens here in this community. We're committed to this community sharing its truths and reckoning with its past and present. We know that there's only so much support that we can do. And so over the last year, we've, you know, spent lots of time talking to commissioners and supporting in whatever ways, just from a professional support perspective. And the primary work that Think Peace is doing, and Think Peace is a collaboration of the Truth-Telling Project of Ferguson, of which I'm the co-executive director, and also Think Peace at George Mason University, as well as Restorative Justice for Oakland Youth, led by, or founded by Dr. Fanya Davis, and led by other folks who've really tried to champion truth and reconciliation as a process that our nation needs to heal. We need a reckoning. We've never stopped to say, where are we? And that's what we're trying to help this community do, although this community is already doing important work around that. And so we're really interested in supporting that capacity building through education and technical assistance around helping lift and move forward the truth-telling process, which includes public hearings. I think education is a part of that. We also support ways to organize and ways for this commission to bring other people in this community into the circle. I think as well, in the, and that's part of the first phase, and the second phase, or the first phase also includes fact-finding, which is a part of that, and also supporting people who are telling their stories in truth-telling in that way. And so I'm, I can't say much more than Vee did, but I'm happy to offer any responses to questions that I'm, as I'm sweating profusely up here. So thank you for hearing from me, and I'm open to respond to any questions that are there.
Thank you. Dr. Ragland, do you have any thoughts on the, what Councillor Weiner was talking about as far as the bringing together the pieces and kind of having, when you have different partners working on a larger project, and what that might, might look like?
I do. I think that, you know, already, we've been working together to support what's possible. And I think that this is, this feels like a large process with so many moving parts. And, you know, number one, I support the, the idea of a person here to help coordinate, but we'll be here and present and try to help fill whatever gaps that, that are present to support connection among all the aspects of this process. We're committed to this, and I don't know how much more I can say about this. If you have some more specifics, maybe that can help me go deeper in.
But you would, so you would also be providing technical assistance to whoever the coordinator is, so that they can, they can successfully carry out that role, which is obviously a key role.
Yes, definitely.
Are you aware of any, any other example of the kind of structure that is being proposed here that has, I know, most likely it's not going to be so in every detail, but I'm always very interested I'm always very interested in modeling and understanding through other precedents that you may be building the foundation of this process on, that you could reference?
Sure. There's, there's a number of processes right now around the country. Some have been more successful, some have floundered. But one, one example that I am really appreciating right now is the international model, which looks at transitional justice as truth-telling or these public hearings. I mean, so a basic model is truth-telling or public hearings, truth-seeking, the data piece. And then commissions go between reparations, particularly the process of transitional justice emerged as a direct response to gross crimes against humanity. And so many communities need it, some kind of reparations. And many of them include or don't include reparations, but most are focused on truth. Most are focused on reconciliation as a process. And so I'm just, I was trying to see some other process I can, I can think about right now. But for instance, the state of North Carolina is currently organized to create a statewide process, and that emerged from the Greensboro Truth and Reconciliation process that happened in response to the 1979 massacre, where a multiracial group of activists were, some were killed and injured. And the commission came together to try to change the way that the community viewed that happen. Essentially, the people who organized the rally were the ones who were blamed by the whole community for that. And what this process looked like was a lot of organizing in the beginning, and education, using various forms. They did a play, they had public conversations. There was a play that happened about the truth, about the 1979 massacre, and the community put question, questionnaires at restaurants all around the city after the play. And that built public momentum for this community to have this process. And that process looked like multiple avenues for community healing. So people were invited in, not just from the core group, but communities all over the city. And that eventually turned out to some real revelations and some real apologies about what happened. And I think that's probably extremely important to just face up to our past so we can move forward. And one of the things that they found in that commission was that the police had been complicit in sharing the parade protest route with the KKK and neo-Nazis, which was one of the first time in American histories that those two groups came together. So one of the things that emerged broadly was recommendations from the city, that went to the city from the commission, that was essentially brought forward by a large community process of truth-telling and healing, and people got a chance to hear sides that they hadn't heard before. And one of the things I like to think about is how Reverend Nelson Johnson sat down, he's an African-American leader who helped initiate the commission, he sat down with a grand wizard of the KKK to have meaningful conversations. And it shows that people, for me, it shows that people who are seemingly on various sides of issues or perspectives can have a conversation, and that can be movement forward.
This is probably, I think, not necessarily the purview of this meeting, but it strikes me that the context in which we're looking at this has shifted since 2020, and become more important, even more important overall for the community, as we, and not just this community, but communities in the state in large, as we see efforts in the state legislature and others to prevent people from thinking critically or discussing the role of race or systemic racism. And you can't move forward without, you can't just shove those things or sweep them under the carpet and be able to move forward as a society. And that, the whole effort to, to get, to basically put a curtain up and say, these, these things don't exist, really was not part of the conversation when we started talking about this.
Yeah. I mean, I think that we're in a very different political moment since 2020, which I think requires us even more to confront what people are experiencing, to listen and to be, to hear and be heard. And, and I, while I do think there are political elements, this, this process is really about healing and reconciling and transforming who we are as a, as a people, as a city, as a community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for having me.
Great, great.
May I ask a question of the commission? So, um, looking at the proposal, and I know there's been many hours that have been spent on it, two questions. One is, how confident are you, as commissioners, about implementing and executing? And knowing full well, and Mohammed, I thought you put it really well before, that, I mean, it doesn't just arbitrarily end, the commission as a body might, or maybe it's not, but the work of reconciliation has to go on, and this is, the purpose is to provide a mapping for steps that, of course, are going to grow and evolve and whatnot, but to, to have a framework in place with action in, in the seven months. Do you feel, as commissioners, do you feel confident in this plan and moving it forward? And then also, what roles do you see yourselves playing in this?
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. I really just want to start by saying thank you for your patience as we've been going through this process, right? There have been a number of periods during our tenure on this commission that felt like we were just facing setbacks or pauses or what have you. I think that by the end of my time serving on this commission, I will have realized that everything took as long as it needed to in order for us to be the best process possible. That being said, with the very specific plan that's been laid out, I do have some level of confidence that at least we can start setting up the frameworks for what can be implemented in this community in perpetuity, because reconciliation will not happen on June 30th, 2023, but it'll be an ongoing process. And I hope that we can do a lot of work to, to get the community involved and more knowledgeable about what those processes could look like and how they can be a part of it.
I basically, I see things as almost like a farm. We have to make sure that we tend to it, start it with seeds, and then let it grow. However we can help, however I can help, I'm willing to do it. So I think I have a lot of confidence in it so far.
I have confidence in, in it, with how it's written so far, but with that being said, I'd also like to say that I also don't feel completely comfortable answering the question, as I don't feel I have complete information. Again, it's unclear the amount of these resources that we're asking for that will actually be afforded, if this is the plan that you will accept, or if you're looking for an amended one. So my answer would really depend on the amount of resources afforded and the level of support that would be given to us, but also that would remain throughout the process.
I appreciate that, and maybe if I can give a few comments, maybe that'll give you a little bit of, I think most of the council has talked a little bit about this plan. Sorry about that. So for me, one, I want to say thanks to all of the commissioners that are here and those that aren't as well at the work to present this to us. There's been, I've been, I've been having lots of conversations and, you know, about, you know, the TRC and, and the mission. The one thing I will say is that I'm happy to see this proposal in identifying, one, what is the charges of the, you know, the three charges, so I appreciate that. The community partners was the biggest reason that I recall last year that this council said, the majority of this council said no to the budget. And the biggest thing that I remember about that is really the community involvement. And earlier this year, before you took your vote, I believe it was in March, for your next budget, the meeting before that, I remember Kevos talking about phases, you know, for the commission to, you know, think about some phases. And then also Dr. Wongui, she mentioned, you know, you know, and the community partners are still there. The healing partners, as well as the NADA partners, they were, the three NADA partners, they were in that proposal. But Dr. Wongui said, you know, how much engagement have we reached out to the community as a commission? Those are her words. And so while I, you know, look at this proposal, and I think that there are some, some great elements, I look at Kearns &amp; West, and I also hear that there is a, really the need for a truth and reconciliation coordinator position. And I would agree with Mayor Pro Tem Alter when she said, you know, reading through this, it does seem like a full-time job that that person will be doing. And so when I look at this, thinking about the role of the TRC coordinator, looking at what Kearns &amp; West do, which in my, which I read as a project manager, the role of Kearns &amp; West, I almost see that role overlapping in a lot of respects. And so while, you know, I, I'm very happy to see that we're at this point, I want to make that very clear, thank you all for getting to this point. But when I see, you know, and it's, I'm not really, you know, if it takes a million dollars to, you know, process, to do this process, I'm all for it, if it all makes sense, 100%. So it's not so much the money, but when I look at a non-community member, you know, getting 62.3% of the 388,000 that is here, it gives me a little pause to look a little further. And if we're now going to look at, you know, this TRC coordinator position, someone said they didn't know what the process was, I think that was Chastity that said that, for, you know, how do we go through hiring, what is the process for hiring? I'll just give you a little snippet, is that, you know, there would have to be a job description created. This person would have a manager here, you know, at the city, city hall. The other thing is that we cannot, that job must be posted, you know, to everyone, and any and everyone can apply. And at that point, you know, you know, the selection is made. So when I look at just what Kearns &amp; West is doing, where we're going, and as far as overlapping, I do, I would just want to be very transparent and caution the, you know, TRC to maybe look a little closer at, you know, how does that project manager, that's what I see this as, as a project manager role, is that something that you can achieve in someone local or within this role? So that's the only thing that I have. I, I am excited, you know, when I read about all that Think Peace can do and what they can offer us, our healing partners, I know all of them, and so I'm, you know, excited to know that they're a part, they're local community members that have been highly respected. The NADA partners, I haven't met yet, but maybe when I see them, I'll know them. I don't know who they are. But that's the only thing that I would say. Otherwise, I know that, you know, people have said, there's value in having outsiders, and I hear that, I understand that. There's value in having someone that knows this process. I hear that and I understand that, but I also know project management and the things that are there, I personally feel can be achieved through another process, but that's all I'll say.
I can just add on, one of the things also that I noted in the Kearns &amp; West was that actually they're, they're putting the research of these, of the data collection on, on their backs, right? And so that they would be creating the database and whatnot, I mean, that, I would tend to agree. It's a specialized skill, but it is something that I think that portion of the work could be done locally. I think it may make sense to, to talk with Kearns &amp; West, or if they're on the line, to, to consider and that as they do the truth-telling, that it, they would be more research-oriented. Again, I go back, and in fact, one of my points of confusion was looking at, honestly, sort of the, there's a number of meetings, and I didn't know if those were solely of TRC meetings. I'm assuming, obviously, there's going to be more meetings than simply commission meetings. But it's sort of, there seem to be a lot of people who are going to be attending these meetings, and a lot of them from Kearns &amp; West. And, and I don't doubt that they might all have, be bringing their A-game, and this person specializes in this, and da-da-da. But I'm wondering if maybe a way to not impede progress and to not slow this up, I'm mindful that this also has a timestamp on it, in the same way that we were talking about a sense of urgency with the direct assistance. But I'm wondering if there is a way that maybe Kearns &amp; West could own the content of the fact-finding rather than the formatting of it all. And I recognize that puts some more onus on some, some potential other partners, but even the University of Iowa, like there, there could be people who, I think, who might be able to be interns, do community outreach, work through the Oberman Center, perhaps. At any rate, I'm not here to solve, but I do, I don't want to offer criticism without offering up also a suggestion. So I do agree with the mayor in terms of the project management aspect of it, because that, unfortunately, that in a company, that's where there's a lot of billable hours. And I do believe that they have, I sound just like the mayor, I do believe, but I do, that, that Kearns &amp; West has a very specialized, expert, you know, set of skills to be able to, to do that fact-finding, to do the data work through the, all the different institutions and amalgamate them and interpret them. I would love for them to be able to do that work while shrinking their portion of the budget to the sort of, the logistical aspects of it.
Yeah, I really appreciate that comment. And there's actually been, you know, this whole process, kind of to Kevos' point, it's like, everything has taken as long as it should have. But we've, we've gotten to know each other very closely these past six or eight or 10 months, Kearns &amp; West, Think Peace, and our local partners. And I feel like we put this draft, this is a first, you know, third, whatever, draft in front of you. And then last week, after some input from the commission, we had another sort of like, hey, you're an all-white company, primarily men, that are taking over 50% of the budget. That's problematic. And I want to just credit Dr. Ragland calling that out, because that's a hard thing to do. We've been working very closely with them, this is very tenuous. We already put a pause on it and changed the whole thing on them. So we asked them to go back and change their rates, actually take the fact-finding aspect and maybe make it more local, you know, so they're, they're trying to work through that. We've gotten some preliminary stuff. Just timing-wise, we didn't feel like we had another full draft to present to you all today, but I just want you to know that some of those things, we are pushing back on.
That's great.
Because we need to. It's like, part of the process is, if you're going to be doing this truth and reconciliation, it can't look like that. It can't just be professionalized like that. And we do have a lot of resources here in terms of fact-finding. We already know that the, the school district does a lot of that already. So there's, I think, some assumptions that they had made that maybe we can, you know, take back, essentially. So, but to the project management, I think it's a really great perspective to look at this through, and actually could be very clarifying. So I've taken a ton of notes to add to and clarify, you know, community partners and a lot of the items that are listed, time constraints, making sure the education is clear outward and inward, and community involvement just needs to be more explicit. I will, I'm adding the project management aspect to it, because I think that's probably actually a good lens for us to look at our partners and say, you know, if it's going to be this community coordinator position, this TRC coordinator position, is it enough? Because it is true, when you look at Kearns &amp; West, originally that was their role. So there may be some of that still in there, and I think we need to clarify whose lane is doing. And I think we need to clarify whose lane is doing what because we quite frankly want that here. And I, and I know that that's what they can do because they're a professional organization, a professional company, and that's like their skillset, but we can do that here too. And so if you just, you know, give us a little bit more time, you know, it's nothing like a fourth or fifth draft to move forward, but this has been incredibly helpful and really just want to open the door to, if you're thinking of something as you're brushing your teeth later, like definitely let us know because we want this to be successful. We want it to be reflective of the work that we can all do together and it's completely part of the process.
I mean, I guess I would say that I, that I think that, I mean, I'm glad you've gone back to them. I'm glad you've made those points. I, I personally, as this is refined, I personally think that we should be giving you, you all as well as the commission, the space to say, we're going to, you know, the amount, the general amount of the budget is okay. So I'm just sort of setting down parameters, right? Possible parameters. And you're going to decide in the end, how the, how the, how that's divided up. So maybe because it takes a while to hire someone, maybe Kearns and West starts out doing essentially the coordination and the project management. As someone is hired, they, they give, they, they hand it off, they hand that piece off so that it is, so that it's local, but then things have already gotten started and the ball has gotten rolling in the, in this sense with, with the people who have, with, with the people who have the expertise and they hand that off. And then you potentially have, you potentially have a lot of hours that then don't happen and are shifted to the local level. But I'm, I'm mindful of time and I'm, I'm concerned and I'm also mindful of the fact that it's probably not, I don't view it as our job to micromanage it. I would like, I would like to see it as our job to set sort of overall parameters and it sounds to me like you all in their various groups have a good sense of, of the need for diversity and the need for, for the local, for the local element to end up not only being prominent, but also being paid. And to, and to sort of say, find those parameters, go forward.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I think everybody is mindful of the time and I know Angie Jordan isn't here. I think she's taking some respite after finishing up the diversity markets. But I will say that she has said this, so I feel like I can convey this, that she would be willing to volunteer her time to ramp that up because she feels very strongly that it should stay local.
I guess one, one other little question I would ask is, has staff, have you been in conversation with staff in terms of, you know, some of these questions regarding the organizational structure, the role of the project manager and so forth?
We have talked with legal, I think, because of any, you know, Angie Jordan's husband is firefighter and so there's been legal discussions about how she could be involved. But in terms of project management, I think I'd need more clarity on what we would ask, like who's, from the city perspective, like who would be a part of that or how we organize ourselves?
I'm just, in terms of the review of the, the framework that has been developed here, it's a complex organizational structure, you have four, four groups working, working together on a, on a difficult subject matter. But I was just, you know, staff has generated lots and lots and have reviewed lots of RFPs on projects, certainly not TRC, you know, a truth and reconciliation process, but are familiar with working on trying to knit together, you know, how, how the, how a team would be structured and how it might be organized in terms of role play, role playing and so forth.
Yes, we have.
It was just a question, but it seemed to me that, you know, they often will review the city's own consultant contracts. I don't, I was just really asking the question if they had been involved in this one in any way.
Yes, we have had discussions with deputy city manager Redmond Jones here, in terms of the complexity of having four entities on one proposal. I know it seems a little strange, but for us, it really creates a more flattened playing field as before we were all under one house. And so we felt like that needed to happen, quite frankly. So, but we were told that that's not an issue, that it's not, it's, it's not super common, but that it's been done before.
I do just want to close my comments that I'm super encouraged by this conversation today and looking forward to when you all get back into deliberate because I know there will be more conversations that you all have. So I just wanted to make sure that you all heard me say, I really appreciate what you've done so far. So thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that. Thank you to the commission and to local partners for the work. It's, it's coming into this halfway through the movie, I guess, just starting on the council in January. It's good to see something this concrete and this detailed in front of us as sort of a draft, right? So, so we understand that, you know, this is kind of bouncing this off of and getting some feedback from council. So as I look at this, I had some of the similar things, wondering about some of the possible redundancies in work and effort between a local coordinator and an outside facilitator or outside company like Kearns and West. So that would be something that as you go back and work through this, I would, would want clarification and a solid rationale to support something like that because for all the reasons that have been mentioned, it sounds like, you know, a little bit of an imbalance there in terms of the way this budget and how it's structured, but it's definitely represents real progress. Very much appreciate Mr. Traore's comments about this is not going to be a seven-month solution. No, it's not. I don't think anybody ever expected that, but I'm looking forward to, to seeing what, what comes out of this and how, you know, what makes sense for moving forward. And so that's a really good endpoint for, you know, this first big step that the city of Iowa City has taken and got underway, you know, before I was sitting up here. But again, thank you for the work that's been done. So happy to see some, some concrete stuff and moving in, and moving in a direction we can actually, you know, see some of these things start to happen, which was very exciting.
I just have one question. I'm sorry, Laura, you were gonna...
Well, I was just, I had a question for the commissioners as we've been around this table before. And do you feel like you have what you need from the council as far as getting to the point of solidifying a proposal based on feedback so that we, you know, you haven't voted on this proposal, right? And so kind of getting to that point of saying, okay, this is what we want to give to the council for kind of the up or down vote. Are you feeling like you're getting what you need?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll respond with an invitation. As you are looking at this proposal more in the next coming days, please feel free to reach out to us with anything that wasn't mentioned tonight. I think there was furious note-taking on all of our parts to make sure that we are clarifying, tightening and adjusting things as you have mentioned so far tonight. We meet again on Thursday. I'm not going to say what the outcome of that meeting will be, but hopefully if you do have any other comments, please feel free to let us know about them so that we can incorporate those into our discussion.
Yeah, all I would echo is that as much input that you have that you would like to give us, we would certainly take it into consideration. We want this to work out. So we really just want to move this forward with you all with us. So thank you all for having us here.
I also would like to say, I agree. I, I think more communication between us only makes things smoother and I really appreciate your time.
Appreciate your time. Would like to agree on the more communication piece, but I also just wanted to say, got more clarity on some things, but still a little fuzzyer now on some others. It's like the suggestion on bringing the university in of not really sure how that process would work, if the job posting would have to be underneath the university's umbrella or if it'd be underneath the city or something.
It was processing out loud, so I did not mean to muddy waters.
Okay, yeah.
Not at all, not at all.
Yeah, it was...
It was, it was processing. It was not a direct suggestion.
Yeah, just in terms of the total budget amount, just trying to learn a little bit more on the number of positions within the actual city, if there's a critical number of people you're looking for or if it's more just as long as everything's covered and a vast majority of the funds are going to people within the area.
As you mentioned, the position thing, I think there's probably a lot of questions that would make sense to hammer out. Is this a position that lasts as long as the, until the final recommendation at the end of the TRC process? Was this intended to be something longer term? Is it intended to be 20 hours a week, part-time, 10 hours a week, part-time? I mean, there's probably a number of things like that, which I don't have a, I don't have a recommendation, but just one of those things as you consider this. I think one other thing that hasn't been brought up that's worth considering and, essentially somebody mentioned transparency, which 100% love to hear that. That's incredibly important for everything that we do. But there's also going to be some sensitive areas when we get to the part of the circles and the people sharing their stories. And so also want the commission to be mindful too as a, as we do stuff that employees for the city or us on the council, we have certain requirements for open records and open meetings and all those kinds of things. And that's going to come possibly into some conflict with people who are sharing stories about their trauma and we don't want to re-traumatize and make somebody, so I think that's a solvable problem, but I'm hoping, and you guys probably have already talked about this, but just want to make sure that that's something, you know, maybe because of my background, the whole like records and meetings and things like that is something I think of frequently. So that's something to, to think about and how that will interact with somebody who is a employee of the city versus a member of an outside commissioner group. So that's just something too to throw in the mix because I'm sure you didn't have enough already.
One, oh, sorry. One thing that you just mentioned that I don't think that I actually verbalized, but is what I understand from what you just said now, is, you know, could there be multiple people from the community doing some of that project management stuff if I understood you correct? And I think that that is something that the commission could go back and have a discussion about and, you know, I just had, I took a kind of a position that I just wanted to share and I think the commission can go back and have those discussions. Anything else?
Um, no.
Great. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Great. We are going to move on within our work session agenda and the next item is the clarification of agenda items.
I just wanted, I just wanted to point out in the, in the agenda, 6A, the, the housing trust fund contribution, not pull it out or anything, but just that this is the one of, this is the contribution to $500,000 that will hopefully be a multiplier through the housing trust fund contribution.
All right, July, any other comments about the forum meeting agenda? We're going to move on to information package July 14th.
Would this, oh, I beg your pardon. Would this be a good time to get an update on the recent meeting on dear management?
Yeah, we can.
Maybe we, we can do that now. There's, there's a recap memo in the July 28th. IP, if you want to wait till that time or we can jump into it now?
Well...
I have no preference.
Yeah, why don't we wait till July 28th so that if someone's pulling it up, they can get there as well? Any other items from July 14th? We're going to move on to July 21st.
Yeah, I just want to mention IP two, which is the, the annual memo on calls for, from the police chief and fire chief on fireworks calls for service. It's always, you know, as, as the state has loosened the laws, it's, it's just becomes increasingly challenging and this, I think this points out pretty clearly that large number of calls, yes, but the ability to actually, two, two aspects, the ability to actually locate the people and at the same time, the, the need to end up getting more specific information if possible through the, through the calling process as, as we move forward on this, but it's going to continue to be an issue.
Yeah. It was so hard. I have neighbors, I live in an area where if you look at the map, there was, we were kind of triangulated among where a lot of calls were. And, and I just, I had many talks with my neighbors and I sympathize and I was irritated and I called and, but the problem is, is that this is sort of like having to know exactly where and when it's going off. And unfortunately, tragically, this was also an incredibly busy weekend for far more serious calls that I think anybody in my neighborhood and of the folks that I spoke with would say, yes, the resources are far better put towards attending to more serious crimes, even while it's a really disastrous situation. But it's something that, you know, hard choices have to be made and, and that was something that I tried to explain a little bit, but, you know, when you're in the middle of things going off constantly, it's, it's hard to, to, to really have that sink in. But I think that post-July 5th, when things went down, people can, could rest a little more easy.
I think it'd also be very helpful in the future if, if we can sort of think as a, as a group or other people to put out, I know that we work on messaging in advance, but to really push out some op-eds or messaging on how difficult this is for animals, how difficult it is for people, for vets and people with PTSD and so, and so, and so many others and look at it through the, like the human lens as opposed to what the state allows or what the state doesn't allow and really call on folks to think about that.
Yeah, I hope, I mean, I understand there were some specific issues this year with, with being able to respond, but I didn't want, you know, I looked at the numbers and I'm sure there's going to be some variation from year to year, but this year, you know, 57% of the calls for service were in five neighborhoods. So, you know, Grant Wood, Lucas Farms, Northside, Weatherby and downtown. So, and I would say, based on, you know, my own anecdotal experience, that the, the public parks are often the sites where the most activity occurs because it's a larger open space. And so, you know, we're talking about fireworks, not firecrackers. I mean, these are generating, you know, this, the sense of explosions that are taking place. And so it's, when it's concentrated and when it occurs over an extended period of time where it seems like there's no end to it, you know, as we, we got some correspondence on this, it was pretty stressful to be in the middle of all that. So, you know, looking forward, I would just hope we can solve this issue of location because it, it's, again, it, it seemed clear that where we were seeing the most activity were in the common spaces within the neighborhood, not, not the only locations, but certainly some of the more prevalent.
Maybe there's some opportunity there with our neighborhood outreach position and as to the point of messaging, as Janice said, even just the basic fact that you can purchase fireworks in Iowa City, but it's illegal to shoot them off in Iowa City. I found myself clarifying that for folks numerous times because that's very confusing and just hammering that again and again.
And I think that brings up a point where I'd like, sort of like a tip of a hat to the earlier councils. So when, when these fireworks were first legalized in Iowa, councils, many of you were sitting here now, were there here then, made it so that the sales was illegal to sell except in very certain places in Iowa City. I know just from my own experience living in Iowa City, that, that after that happened, like the following year, the number of, you know, that we were hearing fireworks and the number of complaints dropped off, it wasn't as prevalent. And so tip of the hat to the council for doing that and a wag of the finger at the former mayor of Spillville, Iowa, who took it upon himself this legislative session, a town of about 300, who was upset that cities like Iowa City had found a loophole to ruin the right of people to fire off fireworks wherever they want or buy fireworks wherever they want in this case. And got that pushed through and got the governor to sign it. And so I definitely, you know, certainly our constituents should... And so I definitely, you know, certainly our constituents should reach out to us, but I encourage them to also reach out to the people in charge of the Iowa House, the Iowa Senate, and the governor of Iowa, for, for, you know, taking away our ability to try and make our community more peaceful, and not have all of these issues for pets and people with PTSD, and, and all of those kinds of things. So I think it's important to know how we got here, and the people that tried to help that were sitting up here, or sitting up here right now, and the people that took our legs out from underneath us again, so.
Anything else from IP for July 21st? Moving on to July 28th information packet?
And that's where IP 6 is, the memo about the bow hunt.
Yes.
Yes.
And we're going to welcome Rachel.
I'm Marion, City Council. I can provide a quick update on how the listening session went last Monday. And then if you have other questions about that memo, I can try to answer those as well. So last Monday, at 5:30 here in council chambers, we held a listening session. There were several city staff. We had about nine members of the public attend, and then we had two staff from the DNR also attend, two wildlife depredation biologists. We had invited them prior. We had, as I mentioned, we had nine people, nine members of the public attend, and comments and questions and suggestions were shared that really kind of spanned the gamut of the different strategies that are included in our deer management program. We had participants who were opposed to the, to the bow hunt, who suggested more promotion of non-lethal methods. And then we also had other members, especially from certain areas in the community, who had really noticed that uptake in deer that our data has also reflected. And were just kind of expressing their concerns, sharing that they were hopeful to help the city as much as they could, see us be more successful in our bow hunt program, or in our deer management strategies in general. And then our DNR biologists were also there and able to provide some perspective about how new bow hunt programs have gone in other communities in the past. We're certainly one of the new, most new communities to have started a bow hunt program. And the DNR did provide some perspective that, you know, it does take some time to gain that trust, that interest in a community.
Kind of along with Counselor Harmsen's comment about those folks that reside in Des Moines, and make rules and laws, and the DNR, et cetera. We, as a council, had tried, over the years, to have a successful process for culling the deer population. Tried many things. And from what we'd heard, the sharpshooting was the most effective. And looking at the numbers now, it's like, over the last two years with the bow hunting, only, what, four, five, six? Not very many were eliminated. And it came kind of close to home for me. I'd never seen deer before, but I came home, actually, from a council meeting one night, late night, and car light shined on the driveway, and I thought it was a large dog, but it was a deer in my yard. And I'd never seen a deer in my yard before. So I found the comments interesting, that perhaps over time, some of the folks that maybe were slightly against any culling the deers, maybe are going to see the light and see the increased population when they start seeing more deer in their yards. I've seen a lot of pictures on social media, people like, the deers are just very comfortably sleeping in their yard, and mama with the babies. And so it might take a little bit of time, but perhaps we'll see that over the process. But then we're going to need the state to realize that perhaps sharpshooting is the better method.
Do we have any reason to think that the session that we had, and the DNR folks who attended, would change the minds of those on the Natural Resource Commission to reconsider our repeated request to sharpshoot again?
We met with the DNR, which I think is also included in the memo, in person in March, and then we've kind of stayed in contact with them since then. They have, you know, we've kind of suggested that a sharpshooting option may be something that would work well in our community, whether kind of another one-time or temporary solution as part of a broader plan. So we have shared that, that suggestion with them. They have also shared suggestions back to us about how to improve our bow hunt program, how we might gain more hunters who are interested, how we can help connect hunters with property owners who are interested and have property that is eligible to be hunted. And then they also connected us with some contacts from other communities, such as Des Moines, a little more urban, a little more similar to us than maybe some other more rural areas. So I also met with all of them, and kind of got some good feedback and perspective of them. Again, that was all kind of focused on, how can we make our bow hunt successful? Because we know that that's what the Natural Resource Commission has a high priority on us ensuring that's an option. So we're kind of focused on how we can help build that as part of our overall program.
We do have, so it's this bow hunt, and then next year's bow hunt, and that's the end of our five-year management plan that the NRC approved. So probably about this time next year, we're going to be working on a new five-year plan to present to the NRC. And, you know, a couple of things. One, I think we have to show that we are taking the bow hunt program very seriously, and doing the best that we can to attract hunters and provide opportunities. And we're making adjustments each year based on what we learn. As Rachel said, we're trying to learn from other communities. The biggest difference right now that we haven't addressed is, the other communities in Iowa allow hunting on public ground. We do not. And, and I wouldn't be surprised if that is an issue for the NRC when the time comes to go back. But clearly, the DNR staff see the numbers, they can see the trajectory, and they want to help us manage the deer in our community the best way possible. So I think if we're in a position next year where we have to go back and ask for sharpshooting, I wouldn't, I don't think we'll ever get necessarily back to the point where we can do that every year like we were. But some targeted sharpshooting in certain areas at certain times may be plausible, as long as we continue to put forth the effort to grow our bow hunt program. I agree with that. I do think if we show a good faith effort to, to try to make the bow hunting work, and document what those efforts are, that we could make the case for reintroducing sharpshooting at some point in the near future. But, you know, so I think it's great. We're doing precisely what the plan called for, trying to make adjustments, trying to make it work, all in good faith. I think we're taking the right course.
Any other item from July 28th? This is really related to IP 1. So as mayor, so we're all aware earlier, as I mentioned, about the Amel Ali situation. And as mayor, I wanted to just kind of get council if there would be some support for me placing on our agenda, on our next formal agenda on August 16th, the removal of Amel Ali from the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. We cannot discuss it, but I can do it independently, but I would certainly want to see at least three people that would support that.
I would.
Okay. And you don't have to, I just need to see shaking of heads. So I will have that on the next agenda. We're going to move on to University of Iowa student governments' updates, and they are not here today. They're on vacation, as so many people are.
Avenging a predator.
Yes. The next one will be council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees. Ed, don't hear any? We are going to be adjourned until our 6:00 PM formal meeting. So we'll see you in about 22 minutes.